You may begin.
Okay. I said. Good evening. This is a, this is a public notice procession of the DOT for the Board of Trustees to do a line review of the River Town Square DEIS. And this is a completeness review. And we began this on Thursday, November 10th with a presentation of the overview and land use and zoning sections, the socionomic section, and the community facility section and alternatives. And yesterday, November 14th, we did a presentation on the traffic and the synchroanalysis, then the traffic section, destruction section, and noise section. Today, we're going to have a presentation on the several technical sections involving soils and geology, vegetation, wildlife, visual appearances, surface water, utilities, cultural resources, environmental site assessment, and air quality section. I just wanted to say that Mayor Canet is tracking today, and I'm just at Deputy Mayor Hay has some conflict. We do expect trustee Flynn shortly, and I'm going to chair the meeting, and I will turn this over to our planning consultant, Doug Lewis, to present the meeting for us. Thank you.
Thank you all. You covered most of the points I had. I just wanted to remind everybody about this particular process we're involved in. It's a completeness review. And a couple of times, people after the meeting came to me and said, "Oh, you must be in favor of the project because you said positive things." Well, we're not at that level of review. And everything we're doing now is to see if it's complete. And if we have a positive comment, it's because the document has become complete. The applicant has done what we requested, put in the information that we thought needed to be there in a way that's readable. And then, when the document gets accepted, there'll be a lot of technical comments from the very same people saying positive things about completeness that will be potentially high critical of some of their conclusions. So that process is the second phase. If anybody thinks that we're in any way giving positive support to the project or drawing any conclusions about the benefits of the project, that's not the stage we're at. We're at the stage just to make sure the information is gathered that's needed.
Dwight, if I may just jump in. Last spring, we went through and did a sweeping document which sort of, the board identified issues we wanted the developer to address in the environmental impact statement. Now we're seeing if they've addressed it. We're not necessarily saying we agree or disagree with whoever's in there. It's just that did they at least respond to the information we asked them to provide? And then, next things we'll get into scrutinizing it, so.
That's exactly right. So, we've got a fair number of technical items to cover. Our, I'll ask each of the consultants these, this table over here is the village's consultants looking on behalf of the village and behalf of the Board of Trustees to see that the document is complete, and then there'll be a technical review after that. So you'll see a sort of different switch in personalities almost when we get to that stage. But I'll ask each of the consultants as they're going to present to speak, to give their name and everything else in the firm they're with. And we're going to start over with Steve, and, well, if I can get this out of here.
Good evening, Steve Marine, Tim Miller Associates. Our office is handling many of the natural resource issues on the project, soils, vegetation and wildlife, air and noise, and some other items, cultural resources, et cetera. Begin with then, our first task was the soils, topography, and geology section. This time, based on our review of the section as it's now, as it now exists and the scope that was adopted, we find that section to be complete. Initially, there was a, we've reviewed three different iterations of this, of this document, as you know. And initially, there was a question about consistency of the soil section with the noise section. There's some mention in the soil section about activities that are going to go on, blasting and such, and then there's some reference to the noise section. We want to make sure there was some connection there, that anyone reading this document would be able to see the connection between the two. Scope requests existing conditions on the site, including description of the soils and topography that is provided in the first four or five pages of the EIS as it's currently We get into the potential impacts, which is the second scope item. They do present an assessment of the impact to the site, to the soils, steeper slope, et cetera, potential for blasting or other removal of rock. That is all addressed in the document. And then mitigation measures regarding erosion controls, steep slope mitigation, et cetera, compliance with local ordinances for steep slopes and blasting. That is all addressed in the document as it stands right. Again, as Dwight said, we don't necessarily, and we haven't even looked at the document really in detail in terms of necessarily agreeing or disagreeing with conclusions. I'm sure there'll be a number of questions on each of these sessions as we move forward. But at this time, the soil section as scoped out in the adopted scope, we find it to be complete as far as, as far as that goes.
I had a question on the, the section that talks about the erosion and sediment control. Does this get into erosion, sediment control during construction, and then also what steps to be taken after construction, or is it just purely geared to the construction phase?
Well, it deals with the construction phase and stabilization of the site after construction.
And questions or comments from the Board of Trustees?
Analytics have been provided in the document showing slopes, showing existing soils, disturbance to slopes, et cetera. Our second section is section 3.3, vegetation, wildlife, and wetlands. And along with this section prepared for the, for the document was an appendix by Steve Coleman, which is a description of the site conditions, wildlife resources, vegetation resources, et cetera. The first time we went through the document, we found that Steve did a very good job describing the site as it exists, but the document was lacking in some description of potential impacts to the site and how they were going to be mitigated. So in our first memo, we specifically asked that a little bit more be ferreted out as to potential impacts as well as mitigation. We did get a second version of the document that was very specific to all the questions that we asked. Just let me double check here that there's any still outstanding in that. The only thing we had suggested and has not been addressed at this time is that aerial photograph be included in this section. I've always found it very valuable to have an aerial photograph right here in the section so that someone can look at the site and get a sense of what, how the vegetation, this site, of course, is interesting because most of it's developed, but you do get a sense from an aerial photograph as to what the site looks like and where some sensitive features might be. They did provide the environmental resources map that we had asked them for, and that is, that's sufficient for acceptance. It does include all the areas that we were concerned about, but I do think at this time that an aerial photograph in that section would be useful. The document includes a description of the study area, ecological communities on the site such as they exist, a detailed inventory of vegetation on the project, on the property. There's some description of endangered, threatened, and special concern species. There were a couple of species listed by the state as being of possible concern on the property. They addressed that discussion, they included a discussion of those species. There's also a wildlife assessment based on site surveys that was done and a listing of animals that were observed on the project. There was a discussion, as we had requested, of the relationship between the project and the Sawmill River directly across on the other side of the Sawmill. We wanted some discussion of that, some assessment of the Sawmill as it exists, just so we get a sense for the larger regional context. And then, they concluded with an assessment of biodiversity in the site and the potential impacts and mitigation if applicable to, to the project. They include the environmental features map, which we had requested, which was requested in the scope, as well as a graphic representation of the different habitat types as they exist currently on the property. So at this time, with the exception of a possibility of an aerial photograph, we think could be helpful, we find that that section is also complete.
One comment you made reminded me of something I asked, I think last night you had mentioned that there were three letters that you had written back to the developers in the process of getting to this version of the draft. You mentioned there were two dates. There was one on August 25th and one on October 6th, and was there a different, another letter that went back and forth between, or did I misunderstand?
Each of the consultants that you have here has generated, that might be for the, that's the traffic, that Phil Greeley's, so he would run those by us as drafts before they went out, but then they went out from traffic engineers. So each, actually, Steve and Lucille and George and I also have direct comments to, so each of your consultants have done that.
Okay.
And Steve had several comments on this section and the prior section.
Very good. Thank you.
The next, we're skipping over to section 3.8 to, and have Lucille walk us through the visual impact section.
My name is Lucille Muns. I'm with Muns Associates Landscape Architects and Architecture.
Just give us a section to get our bearings here.
I want to just jump back to, yeah, okay, jump back to, Steve.
Sorry, give me the mic. Speaking about visual impacts, it reminded me of the issue of the tree survey. And that was something that we had asked for originally. It was originally, it was part of the scope. We got some information during the, the times in between the different versions of the EIS. And now we're at a point where we have a tabulation of all the trees on the site, including their size and health and vigor. But what we don't have is a legible plan showing the location of the trees. They did present us with a landscape plan showing the proposed activity, including proposed landscaping, and the trees are kind of a light gray layer behind all of that, which made it difficult to see, to evaluate really where trees are on the site as it exists now, where specific trees are that we might want to look at. So we suggested that the existing conditions plan, which they've included in their plan set, also include trees at a large scale. We can actually read numbers and look at particular trees. This way, if it looks to us like there are certain trees within a limit of disturbance which are significant and could be saved, we would be able to evaluate that. But based on the map we have so far, we can't do that. So we're requesting that a more detailed tree survey, whether it's a separate sheet, tree survey only, or whether it's incorporated on the existing conditions plan, we'd like to see that as a separate plan.
And also jumping off from that too, with regard to the tree summary, or tree survey summary, we asked for a tally, or asked for a tally of the number of trees to be removed between six and 11-inch caliper, between 12 and 17-inch caliper, 18 and 23, and above 24. They've done this summary, but it would be a lot easier to read if it was in a graphic format, because it's in, it's in paragraph format in a couple of different places in the document, so you have to jump back and forth. It'd be nuts to have that all quantified at the very end so that we can easily assess whether, you know, so many trees over, what size caliper are being removed, and then is the mitigation substantial enough to mitigate that impact? So we would make that recommendation that would be considered.
There is an, I guess, an, I guess I understand correctly, that has a, identifies all these trees.
Yes, yes. What we asked them to do is to identify all the trees and which ones were in poor, fair, or dead condition. And they're also identified whether they're a native or non-native species, because that's important in determining the value of the tree as well. But at the end, there, there really needs to be a total tabulation of all of this. Okay, now, now we can jump to 3.8. We were asked to look at the existing conditions in terms of the visual, visual impact, and I'm just going to review different sections and their level of completeness. So, just jump ahead here. The existing conditions was also determining the views to be looked at in terms of the photographing so that the applicant could provide photo sims for the future. It's important to note that the existing conditions photos were taken during when the leaves were off the trees, and that was very important in, because really you can have a sense of what it's going to look like without the leaves. So applicant was very good in providing that in a timely manner. And the sites that we looked at, the whole map actually, it talks about all the different aspects, and, just jump ahead. But one of the items that was missing in the, this section was 3.81, existing conditions, was percentage of existing open space, but this has subsequently been provided. In addition, a map has been provided as well, so you can actually have a visual showing the amount of open space. But if you jump ahead to just some of the views, you'll see there's a map. It's exhibit 3.82, and it's the site visual character key photograph. And then you can see all the photographs that were taken along the parkway, facing the buildings. Again, looking at the buildings, the intersections of the Chauncey Square intersection, views looking north, views looking south. And a lot of views were taking, taken along the Sawmill because it, we had determined early on that that would be the most impacted in terms of visual impacts from the building proposed. Again, views from Danforth Avenue as well, the South County Trailway, South County Trailway in a couple of places. Again, you can see all of this is with leaf off. So there's a fair amount of photographs that went on. And we actually were at the sites with the applicant in determining some of these locations as well, and these locations were determined based on some comments that the village had previously received as areas of concern. And then there was visual impacts, what are the areas like north and south within a half a mile radius? And you can see, there's lots of photographs. But several were then determined to be what would be identified for the photo sims, photo And one of the photo sims that was determined that would be important would be along the Sawmill River parkway, obviously, and the applicant has provided that in a number of One of the other items that was addressed, was not addressed initially, was the development of the landscape plan in detail, which the applicant has now provided. In addition, what was missing was a site lighting plan, both proposed and existing was, or is presently. And in order to identify what kind of mitigation might be needed, we need to know what's there existing presently, and then what would be proposed. So the applicant, applicant has now provided a lighting plan that includes catalogs, cuts, and, and locations, and what the style and size of lights would be. And had actually gone out into the field and taken notes on the existing lights with their measurements, some readings on the existing lights that were there.
I have a question about the lighting. I don't know whether this is where it's addressed or not. Did they look at LED lighting for that site, or is that another?
Yes, they did look at LED lighting, yes. And that's part of their, they have quantified all the lighting that they're proposing as well. We had asked for how high the lights would be, the number of light poles that would be there, the wattage, and what the light source would be, and they've quantified all of that.
Just notice something with respect to the photographs. If you look at page 3.8.5, and then, and there's a discussion of the Hunter's Run and Walden Wood developments in viewpoint number four, that doesn't really seem to, does that refer to the viewpoints that are on the aerial character key, aerial photograph key? So if you look at 3.8-2, the
Yeah, the photo key, yeah.
And then if you look at page 3.8-5, there's a discussion at the selected viewpoint number four, Ogden Avenue has an elevation of approximately 218 feet, but viewpoint four is
Chauncey Square.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's number one, which should be, it looks like the
What's that?
The one that says view, the Ogden one, yeah, I think those numbers are on, right?
Right. So I just think that there's, those don't seem to coincide with the
Right, the view down Danforth is 10, looking at the map.
Right. And then it talks about the view at Hunter's Run near viewpoint number five, and then that doesn't seem to correlate to the, so that just needs to be cleared up. Just double check, maybe make a change.
Yeah, okay, we'll do. I had two maps, too.
Listen.
All right, so we'll note that and we'll make those changes.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you for that. One of the other comments was about roof equipment and identifying the type and where that would be. And the applicant had identified where the roof equipment would be and their mitigation measures for that. One of the other items that was also missing was the location of various trash, you know, compactors for the various buildings. Those have subsequently been identified and their locations have been provided. And that's important in determining whether those have to be mitigated or not in terms of screening and the level of noise and/or odor that they could produce. The applicant also was asked to provide a description of the existing open space and the proposed open space that was affected, and they have done that. And one of the concerns that I had also was the ability to provide adequate screening in the right-of-way, right-of-way and on the Sawmill. And I know that we did have a meeting with DOT to discuss this aspect, and the DOT did not have an objection to planting in the buffer. However, they left the door open saying that they would need to review, obviously review anything that would be proposed, with the exception of they would not permit any ashes to be planted, and that's due to disease. So that allows us to have some flexibility with regard to mitigation along the Sawmill So with regard to the landscaping, I would say that this section is, is complete with the, the only change being on the tree survey, and also the, as Steve noted, on the plans, full-size plans, identifying trees to be removed. The only other item would have been the signage, and that signage will be pursuant to further approval either in the FEIS or down the road if the project goes through with the Architectural Review Board.
I just wanted to say, I, I realize I made a mistake in my prior comment. I was looking at the wrong exhibit, so.
You know what, there are two of them, right? There's a second one, right? So, okay, that's what I thought, and I was like, oh.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Any questions on this section, comments? Okay, okay. Very good, thank you very much.
The next section is surface water, section 3.4. Yeah, flipping back in the book.
Everybody there? Just let us know when you're ready.
There.
Okay. Yeah, speaking to the mic there.
Do you want, are you on from the top line on this?
Yeah, they'll put up some, we have some
Oh, good.
Visuals for, for this
Okay. George, just identify yourself.
Sure. George Palmer, Hunt Engineering, Village Consulting Engineer. This section we've reviewed with, we've reviewed according to the scope, and the applicant has addressed all the items in the scope. Each section is highlighted, the existing conditions section, we'll start with that. I'm going to actually just flip through the pages.
Just so, we're talking about surface water?
Surface water.
Okay.
The applicant was asked to analyze the existing surface water drainage patterns within the site, and he's done that. He's identified, going to the next page, he's identified areas of building, pavement, lawn, woods. He's given a total of 17.8 acres, and he's broken down each, each section. And he's also provided, and this is one of the next maps you'll see on the, he's provided individual drainage areas, and this, this next section, existing drainage area 1, 2, 3, they all correspond to what you see in these blue areas. I'm going to point to it. Right here, this is existing drainage area 2A, 2D. So when you go to the maps and you're trying to look at what the description is, that's what the description is, is basically 2A would be this area, right, in here. If you follow the screen line around, and you have to, you have to follow them closely, but that one's a little harder to see. But 2A, 2, let's see here, 2D, EEDA, 2D, this one is more clear. You can see this is the area that they're talking about. So if you look at one of these paragraphs, that's essentially, you follow the green line around, and that's the area that they're talking about. And then we go on to next page, 3.44. The applicant was required to provide quantity. He's provided a table, 3.42, showing the peak runoffs, in this case, for the 1, 10, 25, and 100-year storm, for the existing condition, along with the volume. In the next section, the applicant was required to provide past flood events. This was an issue that was raised during the public meetings. He gets, the applicant gets into, on a Monday morning, they observe the flood event, and if you look onto the next page, they get into the elevations and how it's reflected on their plan, and, and the last sentence indicates that for the 100-year flood, the elevation of the water, which is the Sawmill River, which is right here, it doesn't get up over the highway in this, in the location of the site. We know it goes over the highway in several locations along the Sawmill River, but in this particular location, as everyone's, I'm sure aware, Lawrence Avenue was closed, and everything downstream and certain sections upstream are closed. But this particular area of the 100-year storm doesn't go into the site. That's for this section. We get into section E, which in the scope is depth to groundwater. The applicant was required to identify areas where the groundwater, what the depth of the groundwater is, and he was indicated here, he's used the Natural Resources Conservation Agricultural Service has mapping that identifies all the soils in the area. He's used that map. And to supplement that map, he's done some log borings, which if you go into Appendix K, he's done some test borings up to 21 feet in depth, and he's identified that essentially there's no groundwater effects on the site. And then going on, potential impacts. He talks more about peak runoffs. This is, this is quantity. Again, we're talking 1, 10, 25, 100-year storm. And he's provided two tables there, and the second table gives you the existing and proposed and the percent reduction. Showing for each of these years, a percent of reduction for the first, for the one, for the one-year storm, 24%, 10-year, 30%, 25-year storm, 24%, 119%. So in all the cases where all the storm water was analyzed, all the storm water has been reduced by peak. And if you look over at the next tables, these are volume. And again, they give And again, they give some, uh, percent reductions from 7% down to 4.9%. So one was, uh, peak runoff, which is when the storm's at its worst, and the other is the overall storm duration event, how it's been reduced for a 24-hour period. Then we get into qua, uh, that was quality, uh, I'm sorry, quantity. Now we're into quality. The applicant mentions Appendix C, which is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and how he's, uh, addressed the DEC requirements. That, that one section is, uh, this book right here. So, uh, if you want to, uh, go through that, basically it's, it's 95% calculations, and then the first 20 some odd pages is text, which, uh, if you're gonna go through it, I wouldn't go through the calculations, uh, because they're very, uh, they're very intrinsic, to say the least. Uh, but the text, there might be some things in there that you might want to go through.
So that document is, that's Appendix C?
That's, uh.
So that's the stormwater.
Pollution Prevention Plan.
Okay.
And it's, uh, it's to be included in this, I believe it's in the back here, there's a page in, in the book that says that, you know, it's to be inclu, it's a supplement.
Okay, right.
I'm not sure if they provided it on disk. Jim, did you provide this on disk?
Is it on a disk or not?
I don't think so.
Well, it was on a disk.
Okay.
I guess it goes into, when we put these documents on the, um, website and so forth, we'll include Appendix C such as that, so people have them to read and to review. So that's, that's the quantity section, and essentially, they're indicating that they've complied with the DEC regulations, and they've used practices and methods which improve the water quality. And you can see that when you, when you read it. They're basically using infiltration, which we're gonna get to another slide, and we're gonna see what, what that is. Next section is mitigation measures. Again, we're talking about, the applicant was requested to discuss the, uh, complying with the latest DEC Stormwater Management Manual. Again, we get into a whole number of sections and how they've complied with, with the DEC manual and, and stormwater quality and quantity. And at the end of the section, three point four eleven, page three point four eleven, they reference their, their manuals that they complied with, which is the New York State DEC General Permit, uh, GP 01, January 29th, 2010, the, the Village's Stormwater Ordinance, which is Chapter 263, and the New York State Stormwater Management Design Manual. So those are the references that they use to comply with the DEC requirements. And then the next section is, uh, maintenance. We, we talked earlier about maintenance, you, I think you mentioned earlier who maintains. It was mentioned in an earlier section, and, and as in a lot of places, things are repeated, so you don't have to go back and forth. And on three point four 12, uh, clearly indicates, on the second paragraph after number five, that Sabre Dubs Ferry, which is basically the commercial side, will take care of all permanent stormwater management facilities, whereas Lincoln Dubs Ferry will take care of the residential portion of the, um, of the, uh, of the project. And then they list, uh, some of the practices they're using. And, and the village is responsible for long-term operation and maintenance in the public right-of-way. Uh, that's an issue that would be discussed, that, that the board may want to discuss at the FEIS level with the village manager, if that's something that could be agreed to or not. But at this level, it's complete, and yet something, they've taken the position that the village should take care of it, and you can take the, whatever position you would choose.
A little negotiating advice, okay.
Yeah. And then another issue that was asked of in the scope was creating a stormwater district. That's the last paragraph in that section, and the applicant has suggested, or it's in their opinion, that a stormwater district is not required. Again, that's something that's complete right now. It was asked of them, they provided it, they've taken the position it's not required. You can, uh, review that and comment on that in the FEIS. Talked about sediment and erosion control during construction. This gets into a very important part, which is the operator has to have a qualified professional to conduct stormwater assessments. That, that's putting it mildly, basically every seven days, they have to assess the site, somebody has to certify it. They have to provide the document, not as thick as this for every, for every inspection, but, uh, it's a reasonable document that needs to be submitted on a timely fashion, timely basis, and the applicant's aware of it. And the other thing is, the applicant can't disturb the entire site and all at once. That's an important thing to know. The DEC requirement is that you can only disturb five acres at a time. So they have to do some phasing, they have to stable, they can disturb, once they disturb that area, they have to stabilize it, and then they can move into another area. So that's an important thing to remember, because if they get too big of an area exposed, you get, run into situations that could be problematic with runoff and sediment and so forth. And then we get into, um, the uses on, the, the types of, um, practices they're gonna use on site, stabilize entrances, silt fences and so forth. Going on to the next section. They describe in, in detail what, uh, items one through six indicate what those measures are. Uh, a description of each of them. And then we get into the, uh, to the drainage maps, which, if we go to the next drainage map. Uh, we talked earlier about infiltrating. Right in here, there's an infiltration practice, right in here, there's an infiltration practice, and right in here, there's an.
George, just for everybody's information, what does that mean?
That means that water is collected in this area, and it's this area, and maybe even another area, and piped into this area, and it's, um, there are units that are underground, there's an even blow-up of that. And the, basically underground pipes with open bottoms that allow water to infiltrate into the ground. And this helps them reduce runoff into the Sawmill River. So that's basically, and they have three loc, actually, four locations. You have one right out here for the, for the residential. These three are for the commercial, and this one's for the residential.
So, so what those are is that, sort of, just underground tanks almost?
Yeah, they're, they're basically U-shaped chambers that have no bottom to them, and they're, they're placed in gravel, and the water goes into them, and the water goes into the ground rather than being discharged directly into the stream. That provides, uh, stormwater quality instead of allowing the pollutants. And actually, the, the, to get even more detail, in, in these first row of chambers, let's say the water comes into the first row. The first row is what's called pre-sediment. So the water is collected in that first pipe, it has no bottom. And that's the, that's the first row they, they actually take out, they can, uh, remove the sediment as it's collected, so it doesn't clog up the other chambers that are there. So that's, they've placed the sediment, which is called pretreatment, in the first row of, um, stormwater infiltrators, and then it gets discharged through the system and then out to a pipe. Actually, that's another important, uh, aspect. There's three crossings. There's one crossing here, one crossing here, and one crossing down here where the stormwater is, uh, discharged into the Sawmill River. That's important to know because, uh, when they, when they broke up this, if you could go back to the previous one. And looking at all this, uh, drainage, it's basically broken up into three areas. This area right in here, which is the DPW garage and Building I, I believe it is, and then this larger area, which comes down through here, which is the commercial area, and then the residential. So you see anything that has a one, that's discharged primarily across to the Sawmill River, which is here. And then area two, that's the, the designations that they have two, basically discharges through here. And then three, area three, which is all up here as well, comes down across here to the Sawmill River. So they've, they've broken it up, and they've looked at all these aspects, and they've brought the, all these numbers that you see for, are brought to a point right here. So if you see a summary of, of flows, they're brought to a point downstream where all these are collected, and they can be compared, uh, for, for comparison. So that's, uh, that's, that's basically the drainage in a nutshell. Any questions?
George, one, one question. Is, is the, uh, is the reduction an actual reduction, or is it in the amount of time the water is reduced? Is, is the reduction?
Well, we have two reductions. We have a peak flow reduction, which is basically if you had a bell-shaped curve.
Right.
If you reduce that down and you made it a smaller bell-shaped curve, that's a reduction in peak.
Okay.
Then we have a reduction in volume, which is what they've done with these infiltrators. And they've taken the water, let's say that's 100 ga, 100,000 gallons, and they've reduced it down to 90,000 by putting more into the ground and less into a pipe.
Got it.
That's the two types of reductions that they have.
Good, thank you, no problem, thank you.
Um, I have a question. The sediment area, you said the first channel it goes into is, that filters out sediment?
Yes.
Does, does that also, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of parking, lot of drainage gonna be going in there with maybe oil and, would that be filtered out?
That first sediment is, uh, that first basin is, um, it will, it's not intended to be an oil-water separator at this time. It's just gonna collect, well, the sediment will, uh, the oil-water will collect onto the sediment, so certain pollutants will collect onto the sediment, but it's not, it's not designed as an oil-water separator at this time, but it, it will take some of that out, but not, it's not designed that way, to answer your question.
The issue that George talked about earlier about the, um, a district for the stormwater. So these, um, chambers, uh, when the sediment is collected, and they need to be scooped out, vacuumed out periodically. So as we do a better job of, uh, collecting pollutants and, uh, material, not letting it get into the Sawmill, cleaning up the water, we pick up a little bit of extra work in, uh, ongoing maintenance, and that's, that's what that issue was about.
Any other questions? Utilities, which is section three point five is next section. The applicant, again, has completed all the items in the scope as outlined previously. First section is water, uh, united, is, is everywhere, I'm pretty sure the entire village is United Water, is that correct, Marcus?
Correct.
Yeah. And Sabre Dubs Ferry and this development will get water from, gets into the Catskill Aqueduct and so forth. And they've, last paragraph there, a flow test was conducted, and there appears to be adequate capacity and pressure, according to United Water for the project. Potential impacts include capacity and pressure for domestic and fire flow conditions. This section actually, they've given a chart on the next page, 59, they, they estimate the water at 59,568 gallons. But United Water, that last paragraph, will provide a hydraulic analysis of their water infrastructure once fire and domestic demands are projected, uh, I'm sorry, demands of the project are, are established and a certifi, and certified by a professional engineer. That is something that needs to be looked at once, um, in the FEIS, to make sure that there's adequate infrastructure. So they've said they've, they have adequate pressure, they have adequate capacity, but they're still waiting on certification and hydraulic analysis by, uh, United Water. So that's something that will be looked at in the FEIS. Mitigation, they've mentioned they're, they're using water-saving devices, uh, to the extent proposed type of landscape and require irrigation, uh, I guess they're saying that they require less irrigation than, uh, other alternative means. And they're gonna try to recycle water, uh, where possible. Sewage disposal. The village has a sanitary pump station. I'm gonna show you where that is. It's not on here, but it's a pump station located right in this area right here. And, uh, the utilities map, does that have that? Yeah. Yeah, you can't see it, but it's, it's right in this location.
So that's across the Sawmill?
That's across.
Bike path over there?
Yeah, yeah, that's over by the, by the bike path area. And that's an existing, uh, pump station that the village has. Doff-Roffell Engineering has evaluated it. It's estimated at 100,000 gallons per day. The proposed action, as we mentioned earlier, uh, proposes to generate 59,568 gallons per day. And the applicant has proposed to, to offset that and provide, um, infrastructure, which has been purchased by the village. If you move down to section, uh, bottom of the page, uh, based on industry standard, uh, estimated demand, capacity. Uh, the applicant proposes to upgrade the pump station by installing equipment already purchased by the village at an estimate of 150,000 to 200,000 to accommodate both existing flows plus additional flows from River Town Squares. So not only are they gonna accommodate their flows, they're gonna, uh, provide for future, uh, existing flows as well, and upgrade the pump station. Mitigation, uh, of inflow. The important issue here is the last paragraph, which indicates that the county typically wants to see a three-to-one mitigation of flow. The applicant proposes, further down, uh, or above, oh, I'm sorry, above, that he'll repair two of the manholes uh, in the system, which is down by the Sawmill River, which typically, well, not typically, but, uh, is, is reported as taking on water. So to offset this, this, uh, inflow and infiltration, some repairs are gonna be made to the existing infrastructure. Uh, electric and gas.
Yeah. The, uh, county, the, uh, flow of sewage from this site goes to the Yonkers Treatment Facility, which is close to capacity. And so the county has required that anybody who's increasing the amount of sewage into the system by a new development, offset, because a lot of, uh, water from stormwater gets into that, uh, sanitary system, taking up some of the space that the Yonkers plant is having to treat. Uh, they've required that on a three-to-one basis, so for every gallon of, of new sewage going in, three gallons of water that are infiltrating into the system must be eliminated. So the applicant is saying that there's a very strong likelihood, we don't know this yet, but at this point, uh, in terms of, uh, providing a completeness analysis, they're saying the three point one, three-to-one ratio can, uh, will be looked at through, uh, improving the, uh, sealing those, uh, uh, manholes so that there, there's no water penetration from them.
Okay, uh, electric and gas, which is the next section at the bottom. Again, ConEd, uh, has a program for providing underground electric within this area via overhead. The applicant has proposed to put a good portion of the telephone poles, to, uh, remove, excuse me, remove a good portion of the telephone poles and place underground, uh, utilities, particularly in front of, uh, Sawmill River Parkway, particularly right in here where you can see, see the site. So it's to, uh, everyone's advantage to, to remove those utility poles. And as far as gas, gas is all the way up by Beacon Hill, uh, Beacon Hill Drive. So it has to come 2,000 feet down this road, uh, to reach, to first reach the site. So, uh, that's gonna be another, uh, construction impact and so forth, but that the, that the developer's willing to, to take on. And in addition to that, the gas actually will also go to the, uh, DPW garage. They're not only gonna provide gas to their facilities, but they're also gonna provide it to the DPW garage, which is down, which is currently on propane. So now they can be taken off the propane system and use either or. If gas is cheaper, you can use one, if propane's cheaper, you use the other. It covers gas.
And then, will the, I mean, so the, the gas main will come down, so then residents can tap off that? If they, you know, if they can.
Yeah, they're.
Set up the hook, uh, connect to that line?
The main, um, it's not very clear on here, because all the utilities are, are on top of each other, but the line will come through here, and they will branch off towards, towards the, uh, towards each, each building, and it'll come down this road. towards the, uh, towards each, each building. And it'll come down this road, it'll branch off towards these buildings, uh, the parking deck structure, and it'll proceed down, right down the middle of, there's actually individual, for each utility, there's an individual site plan for each one, where they've highlighted yellow is gas and they'll show it going off into each building.
I think David's question is more Ogden, on Ogden, people that don't have gas along Ogden Avenue, be, now have a gas line to connect to if they wish to. That's more the question.
That would be discussed with ConEd.
Correct. And normally they can, they'll go up to seventy-five feet.
Right.
And no cars.
And the homeowner has to-
Right. And then the rest of it, the meter and the connection to the home will be, have to be provided by the homeowner. But the gas line will usually be there.
Right, and be accessible.
That's correct. And then, uh, the applicant was asked to address, uh, green practices. And he's provided some of the green practices, um, alternative, uh, transportation, discussing opportunities with the beeline bus, bicycle storage, and changing room. This one section, changing rooms is mentioned, but it doesn't discuss changing rooms. So either discuss something about changing rooms or remove changing rooms from that section. That's what we recommend. Uh, stormwater quality, that we've talked about, uh, water quality and quantity, they've addressed that issue. Uh, going to the next page, storage and collection of recycle and construction waste management. Yesterday, we talked about how they're gonna recycle portions of the existing building to build road bases and so forth and use crushing and so forth. And they're gonna try to use as much of the onsite material as possible, uh, if it meets specifications, if it meets, uh, the requirements of the village. Indoor environmental quality, they've addressed the low, as you can see, low emitting materials, adhesive sealants and so forth. They have several bulleted items there of, of what they wanna, uh, improve on for indoor environmental quality. Telephone and cable, uh, there is adequate telephone and cable by Verizon and Cablevision. Potential impacts, uh, we've talked about, we didn't wanna see a whole bunch of satellite dishes on the residential side of the, the apartments, and that's gonna be worked into a lease agreement. And then, uh, the next sections are, are each individual utility, the water, the stormwater, the sanitary, and electric.
Sorry, George, can you just go, what was that again with the satellite dishes?
The, uh, the applicant has indicated that, uh, the satellite dishes on any portion, uh, will not, I'm sorry, will not be allowed.
Oh, yeah, I see. Okay.
Uh, will be made part of each resident's lease. So each, each resident can't arbitrarily just stick a satellite outside there and, you know, make a visual obstruction, a visual, um, I won't say obstruction, but, a mess.
Right. Gotcha. Okay.
Any questions on any of the sections?
I did, I, this is more, this is not really, it's more just how things work with those stormwater retention tanks. Those are basically, as you said, half pipes that are in the ground.
Correct.
And so there's, and the, the idea is if there's a lot of rainwater, it'll go into those and be held and not released immediately to the, the river system. But how does that impact, how does that work if the groundwater is, doesn't the rain also raise the groundwater? So how does that interact?
That was, that's a good question. In the, that's why we asked in, as part of their analysis, to do borings, uh, all throughout the site, where, and particularly where these retention systems are. And in the back, I believe it's J, uh, they've indicated that basically the groundwater table is well below these systems.
Oh, okay.
So if the gra- if the groundwater table did come up, they would not, uh, take away any storage or any capacity from the system. So, and that's also part of a DEC requirement. No rock, no stormwater, no groundwater within two feet of the bottom of any stormwater system. And that's, uh, taken at a specific time of the year is when they did their tests and their borings and so forth. So they're not in the driest season and saying, oh, wow, it was out there. And there was, well, we didn't have a dry year this year, but, um, wasn't very much chance for a dry season. But, so they, they did it at a time where it, uh, wouldn't impact that, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Moving on to the noise section. That's 3.7, and that's, Steve?
Yep. Uh, in the noise section, the applicant was, uh, asked to use available methodology to determine existing conditions of, uh, noise and sound in the neighborhood, and then assess how this project, uh, both during the construction phase and during normal operation, could potentially impact the surrounding areas, what we call the sensitive receptors. In cha- in section 3.7, uh, they started off by presenting a general outline as to how a noise analysis is completed. You see a noise analysis background there, uh, including, um, tabulation of different noise levels for different activities that we all be familiar with, whether it's a jet, a jet plane and a rock band, or, uh, rustling of leaves in the fall, and what those, uh, different sound levels might be. Um, they then go on to discuss the Village of Dobbs Ferry noise criteria and how that would apply to the site. And also, uh, methodology as used by the New York State Department of Transportation. We get to 3.7 dash seven. They started the actual analysis. Uh, there were three receptor areas that they did monitoring on, uh, in the vicinity of the project in order to see what the existing conditions were like in those areas. Uh, one of the issues that came up in our review is that they provided a map, but did not specifically show where those monitoring sites were. So we asked them to, to include those on the map, and they have done that. Uh, as you can see, there's a number of receptor locators. I'm on 3.7 dash seven now. Um, residences and other buildings along Ogden, Hunter's Run, and Deer Run, uh, Deerfoot, et cetera. And then there's a description of the existing conditions in the neighborhood. Following that, there's a discussion of mechanical equipment in the proposed condition, as well as increased, uh, noise levels due to traffic, increases in traffic in the area. And that, on page 3.7 dash 10, uh, that brings up a second question that we had during this final review. Uh, there are some numbers there on 3.7 dash 10 under vehicular traffic, uh, describing, uh, some increases in traffic along Ogden, Lawrence Street, and, uh, the Sawmill River Parkway. Those numbers we found to be slightly inconsistent with numbers that were presented in an earlier version of the EIS. So we just asked for some clarification as to why the numbers. In this particular version, the numbers are lower, and we just wanted to see why it is that they, that they, um, included those lower numbers and just to verify that those numbers were accurate. So that's a, an outstanding issue as far as that goes. Uh, we did also ask in earlier reviews, they do reference a, uh, federal document regarding noise levels and how traffic can affect noise levels in neighborhoods, but they did not specifically say how that document applies to this particular site and where the numbers came from. It was kind of a, a vague reference to a document. So we asked for more information on specifics on where that material came from, and they have presented that in this, in this latest version. So then they go on to discuss, again, vehicular traffic increases in the neighborhood and how that might change noise levels. They talk about construction activity and the sounds of, uh, machinery working on the site. Uh, that's also discussed in the soils section, as I mentioned earlier. So there's a redundancy there as far as, as noise levels go. Uh, so they, they have met all the, uh, items in the scope as far as completeness goes, and they do provide a graphic there as to where the sensitive noise receptors are, as well as the areas where they took the, where they did monitoring for, for sound in the area. Unless there's questions, I think that's it for 3.7.
No questions?
Okay, thank you. 3.11 is next? Cultural, okay. 3.11 is cultural resources. Cultural resources is essentially your archaeological and historic artifacts, uh, section. They did present, they did prepare and submit with their first, uh, version of the EIS, a cultural resources phase one, um, phase one and phase two, uh, phase, no, phase one A, cultural resources inventory. So that has been included in the, uh, in the document, waiting for substantive review. That's pretty boilerplate, so we're not allowed to discuss-
Right.
Individual items in that, but that has been prepared and submitted. Uh, section 3.12 is the environmental site assessment.
I just had a question.
Sure.
A factual question. There's a table on section 3.12, point two, the site history.
Mm-hmm.
And it says the 2008, ACCO Nobel-acquired ICI. And, uh, that doesn't seem right to me, but I mean, it just, it doesn't really matter at the end, but it's just sort of a, I'm not quite, I thought they owned it earlier than that, so.
Let me just make a note of that, because when we, when we do the substantive review, we'll make sure that we, uh-
Yeah.
Ask that question. For the environmental site assessment summary then, uh, uh, section 3.12, just a, an editorial comment, the page numbers on that section are just one, two, three, four. They're not consistent with the rest of the documents as far as 3.12 dash one, two, three, four. Just a minor editorial comment. Um, when we first got the EIS, there was no summary included. Um, it took a little, a little bit of time to get that. Um, when we did get a, a summary, uh, it was really only a couple paragraphs. Um, so we did actually request a significant amount of additional information, more specific information regarding the site history, site uses, um, any outstanding issues, uh, groundwater monitoring, location of underground storage tanks, et cetera. And then we did sit down with representatives of Woodard and Curran, who, who prepared the ESA. We did sit down with them and let them know our concerns on specific issues, and they've addressed those now in this, in this latest version. Um, you know, I, I was here for the scoping sessions. I, I recognize what an important issue that is in, in the big picture here. So we did meet with them and went over the, uh, specific items. They have prepared a graphic now showing an outline of the site, including monitoring wells, including location of storage tanks, et cetera. So that is included. Um, and so the phase one, phase two, phase one A, phase one and phase two summary is included in the EIS. Again, we will continue to look at it for substantive issues as we go forward, but the, the report is, is present and does meet the, uh, conditions of the scope.
Okay.
3.14, okay? That's 3.14, that is air quality. They used, uh, recognized methodologies and standards for preparing a, an air quality analysis of the site and adjacent neighborhoods. Um, you see they're beginning on page 3.14 dash one. They discuss air quality standards. Uh, the only issue we've had, um, in this last go-around is that there is still an inconsistency with tabula, with table numbers. Uh, there on that first paragraph of 3.14 point two, they still refer to a table on, on the following page as Table N1 rather than 3.14 dash one. There's a, there's another, uh, reference to it on the next page where it's correct. Again, an editorial comment, just so that things are consistent, 3.14 dash one should be that, the name for that table. So they, they present the air quality standards. Uh, they discuss existing conditions in the, in the neighborhood. They compare those, um, conditions with air quality standards. And they go through extensive, uh, discussion of CO2 emissions, uh, greenhouse gas analysis, mobile source of, of carbon dioxide, uh, being traffic-induced activities, um, dust and air, dust and construction-related air impacts. Pretty comprehensive section. It's a very comprehensive scope, but I believe that they've addressed all those, those various issues related to air quality, uh, in that section. There's a discussion of dust and dust impacts and mitigation for that, um, and a graphic showing the, uh, mesoscale air quality, which is the larger study area in roadways and, and in the vicinity of the site, um, and how that relates to the broader picture of, of air quality in that part of Westchester County.
Zach? Thanks. I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I, I actually left the air quality section out in my car, but I had some notes. I just wanted to ask a couple things on, so bear with me if I'm-
Sure.
I guess first of all, I was shocked that New York State has eighty test sites, and White Plains being one of them, but White Plains does not test for carbon dioxide. So I guess, would it be appropriate to use a site nearby? Is there one nearby that would, that we could get a carbon dioxide, an accurate carbon dioxide reading?
I don't know the answer to that question. I can, we, I don't do air quality in my office, but I could certainly ask the person who does the, uh, does those reviews for us as to if there's a, a site that's closer to, to the site here that does monitor CO2.
Okay, good. Um, one thing, on the, uh, stationary with the buildings, I was just a little unclear. It, it looks like there is the existing building, and then when they build a new build, it goes up to like sixteen thousand plus tons per year. And then I think when you re, I just wanna make sure I have it right. Then they're gonna remove the old building and it goes down to seven thousand fifty-nine tons per year? So I just wanna make sure I have that correct. Is it an actual net decrease?
I haven't reviewed this in detail. I mean, again, we're dealing with completeness at this time. We haven't really gotten into the substantive calculations-
Okay.
Yet. We, we really looked in this section to see if they've presented all the information that we asked for.
Okay.
We will analyze that information and see if we agree with their conclusions as part of the next phase.
Okay.
So, uh, if you wanna give me those questions now, we'll make sure we keep an, an, an eye on those, or we can talk about them more as we move forward.
Sure. I'll tell you what, why don't I give you a section of, uh, 3.148, which is the mobile sources in cars. So it says the baseline is sixty-four thousand six hundred eighty tons per year. And in 2013, the no build goes to seventy-three thousand three oh three. So that's a pretty big increase. And I know Dwight, yesterday, right, the traffic consultant said, "The assumption baseline, New York State, was that a one percent increase in traffic per year." So it seems like that jumps just on its own with no build by eight thousand six hundred twenty-three tons per year. The post-build goes to seventy-five four fourteen. So it's only, it's showing that the only difference between a build with mitigations and a no build is about two thousand, actually about nineteen hundred tons per year. So I guess that no build, seventy throughout, three thousand three oh three, just a little more explanation as to how we got to that number, such a big increase under no build.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I got it. I have that as the table at the top of 3.14 dash nine, is that correct?
Yes. It's showing existing, no build, build.
Yes, that's it.
Yes, yeah.
That's it.
So it's Table 3.14 dash four.
Right, okay. On the same page.
Thank you.
I think that's it then. Dwight?
Sure.
Call your attention to two final sections that are in the back. They're self-explanatory, so we didn't actually go into them. There's section 5.0, unavoidable adverse impacts, and it's, you know, if you turn to that, it's the end of your-
Just give us a second here.
Yeah. It's before all the appendices.
Before then?
Before that.
Yeah.
It's the last section.
After this. We're gonna have this tab nicely when we final, so that we can find things in a jiffy. This is-
Perfect, thank you.
Have we basically got there yet?
Yeah.
Okay. These are, um, pretty self-explanatory, so we didn't feel like we needed to go into any great depth on them. But unavoidable adverse impacts, when you have a construction of the size of this, you're gonna have short-term impacts, that's construction impacts. Long-term, they will be impacts that they have listed here, the soils and topography, you know, we're doing some blasting, vegetation, taking down some trees, utilities, there'll be additional- be additional consumption of water, et cetera. There'll be additional traffic, and there'll be some burden on the community facilities and services, so that section gives you a quick look. It's required under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, that this be analyzed or at least discussed, which it is here. Then there's a 6.0, additional impact evaluations, and there's irretrievable commitment of resources, I mean, basically, there's construction that's going to happen with this if it ever gets approved, gets through the system, and those are, once those buildings are built and the roads are built and all the other stuff, it's a commitment of resources that, you know, you're not going to get back, you're not going to retrieve them. And there's growth-inducing aspects of it, as outlined in there. The conservation of energy resources section is a quick summary. Hopefully, we, as we go along through the project, we'll see more energy-saving methods that are applied, but the developers listed a bunch of things here that he would, they summarized from other sections. And that's about it. At that point, you've got the whole, whole magilla, as they say. Let me ask you, my impression that there's some fairly short-term, minor technical areas that need to be done to get numbers correct, to put in a map that's missing, that kind of thing. But the one section that you've, this is just my translation, so tell me if I'm wrong, the community facilities section, there's a greater piece of analysis that we need to do, and we're working on that, but I don't know that, if it was, if we didn't have that section, I, you know, you could almost think in a week or so we could be done, but getting that section together and back to you so that it has the data that you are interested in seeing, that you think you need to have in this document that's not here now, I don't know when that's going to be done, but we're going to be, we're working on it. So, given that, we've completed everything we planned to do, but we will need to come back to you with that section, and it may not take long. I mean, I don't think we need a huge, big work session for it, but I'm just giving my opinions and I'm looking to you for guidance, too. But at some point, we can transmit most of the other changes once it's been reviewed by the technical consultants to you by email or any other different way, but that section, I think, needs a bit of discussion when we get it. Is that, am I reading the tea leaves about right?
That was the section, I'm sorry, Dwight, that was the section regarding police and fire and analyzing the impact of additional services.
Yeah. And I felt like we didn't, you didn't have enough information to actually have a full discussion.
Right.
And so that's the whole idea of this document, that there's enough information to have a full discussion, so we have to get that information to you. So, but that's the only area I thought of with other, that required a bit of research and pulling stuff together, that wasn't just sort of technical corrections and adding a map and things. Is that pretty much?
Yeah, I think that's correct, and I guess what I'm thinking, I just, clarifying my mind, what is the timetable that we have to make a decision on whether this is complete?
Well, we.
Thirty days or 45 days?
It's, yeah, sorry about that. Forty-five days for this initial review, and then if we say it's not complete, and then the applicant resubmits, then 30-day window is open on that. So they, just looking at the timetable, it feels, you know, we had this optimistic idea that possibly we'd have everything together November 22nd, we could actually say it's complete, because the whole idea is to get a document with the information in, out to the public, so they can begin to participate fully in this process. There's a lot of interest in it. But if we're not quite there, and I don't think we will be by the 22nd, the next formal board meeting, Marcus, in December, would be?
I think it was December 12th.
December 12th. So the 12th, or 13th?
13.
Okay. Okay, well, they think they can get everything to us by the end of this week. That's still, so, the 22nd is, I can backtrack a little bit, the 22nd could be a meeting at which either we did have everything and you felt comfortable and could accept the document as complete, or we could indicate that we still require additional information and give ourselves that 30-day extension that would get us out to the December 13th meeting date. One of the other things could happen on the 22nd, and that depends on how fast we get it and what kind of review we can do to make sure everything's satisfactory, and I'm concerned about the one section that I mentioned, that we've pulled together what's really needed there, and that you're satisfied, that you really have the kind of information that would enable a good analysis of impact on police and fire services. But if the developers do produce everything and it's satisfactory, we don't want, there's no point in holding it up. The whole idea is to get it to completion so the public can get a hold of it and begin to dig into it. So what's your thinking on all this?
Well, I guess it's hard to make a decision in vacuum, and I also obviously will defer to the mayor on how he wants to proceed. I think if we, you know, we could always notice, you know, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and if we're ready, fine, if not, you know.
Yeah.
We also have an organizational meeting on December 5th, where we could also vote on, you know, have a quick, add that to that meeting as well, so, which is, that's not usually, usually we just do organizational things, but it's possible we could, if it's just a matter of having a formal vote, we can add it to that, that meeting as well, which would be, so.
All right.
I guess we'll, Marcus and I will make sure we relay this to the mayor in setting the agenda for next week's meeting, and then we'll see what we get.
The other question I have just for the process, if the village board, whenever they do accept it as complete, I want to make sure we have enough time, when does, how long does clock start for the FEIS to be reviewed, so I can make sure we get all this information in a digital format to get out there on the website?
Right, because I think the other, the other issue is, you're talking about having the public review during, you know, the Christmas and New Year's period, so.
I don't want to limit our timeframe because of the holidays, too.
Right. Yeah, there's a time span before you can hold your public hearing, there's different time elements that we have to look at, so I can spread that out in a little memo to you with different options on it.
Okay. So we want to make sure the public has an adequate opportunity and not interfere with, you know, people going on vacations and things like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So, anyway, I wanted also to thank you for the level of work you all have done to dig into this. We've, we've had this document for three or four months, sections of it came in, and we've been working on it, and, you know, it's not easy to pick up something of this size in the time, time that we've been looking at it and to get through it, so I very much appreciate the time and effort you all have put in.
Well, having this visual presentation was very helpful to helping us, you know, I obviously have to do some more reading on it, but I want to thank everybody for their presentations tonight, and obviously I have Vic or Bill or Don have anything further to say, I'll let them speak first before we close.
Just once again, thank you everybody for the hard work and the due diligence, and we'll see where this takes us next.
Yeah, good, no, I'll echo that, Vic. This is great, I mean, I'm learning, it's on here, guys, this is great, so, you know, continue to looking, forward to working with you on this and getting through the process.
Good.
Yeah, I'd also just like to add my thanks for the work that you all did, you, you know, you really went over this and you showed us that you are checking it very carefully, we appreciate that. And also want to thank the applicants for, for the work that they did, this is a major document that we put you through, and you've come through, so thank you.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank our consultants for, obviously you were very diligent in holding their feet to the fire to get in, obviously, the work that you did, and I'm looking forward to your critique on the next phase.
Sure. Take the mic, take the mic, please, if you want to say something.
I very much appreciate everybody's hard work, the board.
I'm sorry, interject.
This is Corey Raven, I'm one of the owners of the property, and I just wanted to say we're going to do everything we can, we have a very capable group of professionals who can do everything that they can to get all the information that's been requested to the professionals as soon as possible, hopefully before Friday, and if the professionals that are representing the interests of the village are satisfied, it'd be great to be able to consider completeness on the 22nd. If not, then we'll put it over to the, to the following meeting, but we're going to do everything we can to get any information that's been requested to the professionals.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. What else? Anything further, I'll adjourn this meeting and thank you everybody, have a good evening. Thanks.
Thanks.